I ask for the Pledge of Allegiance. Joe, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under the color indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for just a moment. This is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I'd like to have a moment of silence for all those women who have dealt with this terrible Thank you, please be seated. Just as a review, tonight, after we go through public comment, we will be having a public hearing on a tax incremental financing district, Resolutions 2013-11 and 12. And then we have no old business to take care of and new business. We'll have a first reading on the new impact fee ordinance and Resolution 2004-11A, which is a resolution relative to the collection and distribution of rental fees for the Mayflower Grange. As we get started, we'll start with a presentation by Jason Williams from the London area Arts Council during public comment.
And Mr. Chair, Mr. Williams is actually, there's an Arts Council meeting going on at the same time, so he's opening that meeting up.
Okay.
So if you want to proceed...
We'll start with general public comment while we go and get him. Anyone have any public comment they'd like to make that's nonspecific or is not already alerted to the council?
Well, Mr. Clark, please. Mr. Smith, this is the amount that usually comes compared to last time, so you don't have to get extra chairs.
Okay.
Duly noted.
Okay, in the meantime, let's jump forward to the approval of minutes while we wait for Mr. Williams to join us. I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 23rd.
Motion to approve minutes of September 23rd.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, those minutes are approved. How about a motion to approve the minutes of October 7th?
Motion to approve minutes of October 7th, 2013.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, minutes are approved. Mr. Williams? Would you like to join us at the microphone?
How's everyone doing?
Good.
Great.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jason Williams, I live at 85 Litchfield Road in Londerry.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
As many, I don't know, I'm the new Chair of Londerry Arts Council, and I've been asked just to come in and give you guys a little refresher on what we're up to and what we've been doing. Is there a USB or anything I can plug in for the overhead?
I think there might be over on this side.
It's not a big thing if we can't.
This is a VGA connection?
All right.
Is that an option for you?
No, that's...
I'm going to have to set up with...
That's okay. So, as of right now, I'm sorry about the presentation, uncompatable Mac, rest of us artists. We are in our ninth year presenting three shows a year. That would be the November Art in Action, which is hosted annually at Mac's Apples, and this is our third year showing at Shady Hills as well. We have two venues, we have seven art, excuse me, five artists showing at Mac's and 12 at Shady Hills. This show is particularly unique, it's a two-day show. It showcases the local artists from surrounding areas, including mostly in Londerry, but the catch with the show is that you have to showcase what you do. So say you're a painter, you have to set up an easel and paint. If you're a sculptor like myself, you have to sculpt, and that kind of gives a bridge to the viewing audience to understand the process and the mythologies behind it. Then we have a show in September, which is the Art in the Common, which is, we just got done finishing this year's, which was a great success. And then we have the following Art in Action in May, I'm sorry, did it out of order, but... On top of that, we also have the concert series that we host each summer on the Common, that's the concerts on the Common, and we bring in local acts and different acts around the area to showcase and enrich the community through music. Right now, we're expanding, trying to bring in new ventures and new opportunities for local artists and artistic community and the growing populace of art lovers. We are in talks with a New Hampshire Theater Factory, trying to bring in a professional theater group into Londerry, which would benefit, in my view, everyone in the community, professionally, business, and leisurely. Top of that, we are looking at new venues for hosting new events. Right now, we're trying to work something out with the Historico Society to have a new show, a new media show for the contemporary artworks, including visually, video artwork, installation pieces, more contemporary pieces on top of that. And then, we are mostly branching out in social media, trying to figure out new and exciting ways to entice people into the community as far as Facebook, Twitter, Tumblr, you name it, we're trying to get on there and have a presence. As far as so, continuing with print media and looking at doing media outlets and interviews. We also show in the Leach Library, we have a month-long process where we have showcased one artist that has nine easels in the Leach Library, and they have a solo show, which has been just now going into its new year for a new register to get new artists in there. That's pretty much it. We're just kind of excited right now to continue to grow, we're kind of spreading our weeks a little bit into new areas. An example would be for our Art in the Common show, we've developed new categories for allowing new artwork medias to be included, theme prizes. This year was the celebration, I'm sorry, the illumination of negative space, and it had a $500 cash prize, we had a winner for that, and then we had the subcategories, which was $100 per category painting, sculptor, new media. And then we're trying to do new programs with different businesses and organizations to, like I said, continue the enrichment of the community through the arts and just enjoy ourselves, basically.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council?
No.
Mr. Williams, thank you. The Arts Council certainly brings significant added culture to the community and appreciate everything you and your group does and wish you the success in the future.
Thank you, and I hope to see you next month at the Art in Action Show. Absolutely.
Mr. Williams, I would also just add that Mr. Clark, sitting behind you, was a big fan of social media, I'm sure he could probably help you out.
All right. We're meeting right now.
I'm meeting here.
You're meeting here. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Seeing none, we'll move into our public hearing. I have a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion open public hearing?
Second. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're in public hearing. This is the second reading and public hearing for two resolutions, 2013-11, which is a resolution to establish a municipal economic development and revitalization district, and Resolution 2013-12, which is the TIF, Tax Incremental Financing District, up and around the airport district. We have Mr. Arnett to present. Stu, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Floor is yours. Please state your name and address for the record so that Kirby can take that down.
Okay, there it is, there it is, John, thanks. Just stand by in case I blow it up.
I'll do it.
Good evening, hi, Stu Arnett with the Arnett Development Group, and we're pleased to be your contractors to help on economic development projects, including looking at the how to best get investment, private investment into the, what we're calling the airport area, in addition to the Pettingill Road, sewer, other things. And this is our, I think our third chance to discuss what we're discovering about the infrastructure investment for this area. I just want to take a minute and tell you that before I go into the presentation, you'll see that some, we've made progress since we've last talked to you. I want to give some credit to Kevin here, who's really hosted a wide range of meetings and discussions and brainstormings and spreadsheets, saying, let's go to, you know, start with ground zero and work up, let's look at every assumption we've built this on, why do anything, why do it this way, why do it now? And so we've gone down that path again, I'll show you, we're rethinking some things, not dramatically, I think all to the better, but it's been a very, I think, productive month since we've last talked to you about this. The airport tax increment finance district has its purpose, two goals. The first is basically economic development. The TIF district is enabling under Economic Development statute, and the outcomes, if it's successful, would be improved job production, a greater tax base, and better industry innovation, higher value industry. So the first goal is economic development. The second one, as far as using the TIF tool, and I should probably again introduce what that acronym means, try to be acronym-free here as much as we can, TIF is a Tax Increment Finance, TIF, district, which the town would use new incremental tax revenues received by private investment paying property tax. Take that incremental new revenue, nothing from the existing, but new revenue, and apply it against any bonding it did in that district until such time as that's paid off. So the second goal here, in addition to economic development, is by using a TIF, you can accelerate the bond paydown, I'll show you the ratio here in just a minute, because every year that you keep the bond open, it's costing $37,500 for every million dollars borrowed.
If I could interrupt just for a minute, just to make it clear, while I agree that the two goals are what's behind me on the screen, tonight, the action in front of the council is to examine the TIF district as it's defined, the construct and so forth, but tonight there'll be no obligation of any funds by the town.
Absolutely.
That, if so decided to be pursued, would happen at a later time, and if it's a bond, it would be at the March election.
Absolutely. Mr. Vice Chairman, we'll state that a couple times, but I'm glad you did early again. Like with anything, the first question you ask in a public policy thing is why do anything? The first reason is we know that if you adopt a district, it is an opportunity to, not a requirement to, it's an opportunity to use basically 80 cents on every dollar collected versus 21 cents if the TIF district wasn't there, meaning if you, every incremental dollar coming in, because the town, school, and county operational budgets do not receive that, their portion, it leaves 80 cents of that dollar available to pay off the debt, versus if you took it and it wasn't a TIF, you would just have the 21% that goes typically to your operating budget. So generally, it's a four times accelerator of the ability to pay off your bond, until such time as the bond is paid off. That's the only thing I can guarantee, I think there's many things we hope this will be an opportunity for, and this is what we'll be pursuing as we go forward between now and the town meeting. First, we think if we can do this, we'll have better quality of road and sewer infrastructure to be built versus what would be done if we didn't do it. We think the growth in the district will be faster, we think it'll be, result in better and more jobs, we'll show you a little bit why we're thinking that in a minute. We think it'll allow a greater tax base, and the difference is between $70 per square foot of assessed valuation to more like 100, 100-plus, if we can encourage certain things to happen. We'll get, we'll see benefits sooner, because it'll be more coordinated, we'll be able to implement it quicker. We'll build into the infrastructure the ability to have expansion potential, such as making the road wider if traffic warrants it later, versus coming back and trying to buy right aways after the fact. And then, we should be able to get greater density, this is an area that has great potential, but also has some access issues. And then, one of the things, a small possibility in this is an extension of the town's trail system, which is a real amenity for this area for both residents and for new workers to come to the area. So those are opportunities that may come from this, and that's where we're going to spend more time looking at this over time. What we've said since day one, we'll say it again, we'll keep saying it, is our conditions before doing any funding is that, per a determination made by the town manager that reports back to this council, even after the town vote, he has to be convinced that there will not be a negative effect on the town tax rate, it's basically a cash flow positive, neutral or positive on day one, and that there is also significant private sector contribution both now and subsequently later. So this is not the town doing this by itself. The decisions that are public policy decisions that are coming up because of this, the first one is to enable the airport area district itself, that is, mentioned one of the two resolutions, I'm sorry, by two resolutions, one to adopt the ability to have any district, and then one to adopt this district, and I'll show you what the district looks like again in a second. As the Vice Chairman mentioned, it does not commit the town to spending anything, and the possible uses for the end of the district are the two that have been talked about for some time, road improvements and sewer intercept, and there's also another half a dozen that might happen depending on how time goes. One of the things we've done all along, I think we've said to you, is that in the adoption of the enabling statutes, enabling budgets, the enabling vision, you want to be overly expansion, you want to be, you want to include things that have only a small chance of perhaps happening, because if you can't, you don't have them in now, you can't put them in four, six, or eight years from now. I've worked with a couple towns recently that kind of are kicking themselves that they wish they had put some what-ifs in when they adopted it, because times have changed. And so, just because we're putting some of those in, does not mean you have to do any of those, it just means if you decide to do it one year, two years, five years, 15 years later, you have that ability. The second public policy thing, as mentioned, is the decision about doing a TIF bond at the town meeting, and that has to be a vote, just like any other bond of the public, with the majority requirements, public vote. Again, even after that, we would have construction numbers before go, so that if the construction numbers came in much higher, we could hit the brakes. Again, the town manager is going to report back that he finds that it meets a cash flow neutral or better requirement, or it doesn't go forward. And the third decision is one we've added tonight that we've talked about before, but we haven't specifically talked about here, is a parallel program, and it's not part of the two resolutions, it's going to come later, just to let you know about it tonight. The Economic Recovery Zone ERZ expansion, you have two ERZs now, we're going to ask you between now and the end of the year to expand one of those, and the reason we're now linking the two up is we're going to get a little too close on time, so we don't like to confuse you with the two, but they're both, you'll see why they're complementary. And that is to increase the size of an existing zone, thereby increasing the number of Londerry businesses that are eligible, and allows those businesses to apply for a state tax credit against their BET or BPT. Okay, back to the district itself, back in August, we presented this map of proposed district, it was a little bit different than the one that was presented to you a few years ago, there were some concerns that it seemed bigger than it needed to be, and there were also some concerns by property owners that included agricultural and residential land. Remember, a TIF district is not a zoning map, but rather than have people who are including this not want to be, we did make some revisions, and this is what the map is now, we've taken off a big piece along the eastern portion, which was predominantly residential or agricultural. We're still well below the criterion of the 5% and the dollar amount, and it does fit the growth patterns, the zoning a little bit better than the first one probably did, but you can see we took quite a big section out. The little stinger coming out of the back, by the way, the little red stinger, that includes the road, because that means if you wanted to do something to that road down the future, it's in the district, it's literally in the district, so that's why you had that little red stinger coming out the side. The ERZ, again, very quickly, it's a, allows local businesses to apply for a state tax credit. The reason we're bringing it up, it's time-sensitive, it has to be in place by the end of the calendar year for the business to be able to include it on their state tax application. This is the, this is what we're proposing, the two blues are the existing ones, and on the blue one on the left, we superimpose the red lines of the TIF district, the one on the right is a different ERZ, and what we're proposing is the red area expansion going up along the side of the airport. We've had a couple businesses already say they would be very interested in investing more in their properties if they could have this expansion, so those are the areas that we're proposing be expanded.
Could you back up one slide?
Yes, sir.
We can't.
Yeah, yeah.
In the ERZ, it would seem, I mean, it seems obvious that that would be an incentive to businesses wanting to move into the district to get this benefit, but beyond that, obvious to me, is, do we have any evidence from either business statements or from other TIF districts or ERZs that that's actually what happens?
Yeah, the area that we're proposing, Mr. Vice Chairman, is being added because of businesses that are already there, that are seeking that as an incentive to invest in their existing facilities, but we haven't even talked about it being listed as an incentive for companies coming in. The credit is a fixed dollar amount set by legislature every two years, it has historically been exceeded, the request, and so what happens is the requests are pro-rata down, so if it's 110% requested, you might get 90% of what you've asked for. So what we'd like to do is make sure that as many existing companies have that opportunity to have, to receive that credit. So this is, this is being added predominantly, if you can see the areas, that's a predominantly area that is built out, and it'd be more for existing businesses than it would be for the newer ones, but for more in the two blue sections.
And the credit is to the New Hampshire State Business Profit Tax, not to property tax.
Correct, either BEP or BET.
Mr. Chair, I would add too that on Friday, I actually received a call from one of the developers that has land on Pettingill, asking if that was already within the existing ERZ, because it was very important to one of the companies that's looking to move in there, that that be established as part of the ERZ, which it already is. But yes, Stu and I have had the meetings with the existing businesses that have asked for that expansion in the red zone that you see up there, and also state officials from DRED met with us about this, and they are very much supportive.
To be clear on the map, what's in red is the expansion of the ERZ, not the, it'll make the entire area that's blue the ERZ.
Correct. It's actually two different ERZs split by 28, but the red would be amended to the one on the west.
Got it. Any potential downfalls to create in this type of zone?
The only thing I would, we're going to have to double check, I think John has done it with it, but is to make sure that we're within the caps of how much you can put in stuff, but otherwise, no, it's a...
So there's a certain percentage of area that you can...
Yeah, I think we have some, there's not, it's not a percentage, I think that you have to make a case that the area is either undeveloped or in need of redevelopment, so I think the only thing that might change the parameters, Counselor, is if we look at something and the grade comes back and says, you know, that's really, doesn't quite fit the parameters, or take a parcel or two out, but I don't think so, I think this will be fine. And it is, it is not a cost to us.
And last year, didn't we do this on Jacksbridge Road?
Yes, yeah, that's the parcel to the east, so...
The blue one?
Yeah, this area is now.
Yeah, so this is what you, this was put in for the tire company in Coca-Cola right now?
Yeah, the Jacksbridge Road area.
Yeah.
Thank you, please continue.
I appreciate your questions, thanks, and I, again, I apologize that we brought this into the other discussion, just, we're trying to get them both through the door.
Right, that's good, that's good.
As I mentioned, Kevin's been asking some good questions of a lot of people about what do we need to do and how come, and it became apparent that some of the past was a big part of those answers, and so, just taking some of you probably back, the evolving vision for why this road and the sewer was important started with the 1993 charrette, and what I'd like to do is just point out how this is designed, you'll see there's a cluster here, there's one big building here, there's a bunch of buildings there, sort of a village look here, a lot of interior roads, but a lot of shared areas, kind of a bit of a mixed use, not residential, but office, healthcare, recreation, almost everything but residential, again, clusters, fairly high density, many buildings are envisioned as multiple floors, and this is where some of the original traffic projection numbers were generated from, from this 1993 charrette, for good reason, it was a good, it was well before a lot of other things happened that we now know. And your master plan was just adopted last year, a similar higher density pattern, again, you know, clustering of buildings, sharing of roads, smaller 10,000 to 50,000 square foot buildings, you know, amenities, you know, again, almost more of a village feel to it, higher volume, higher square footages, and without making too much of a comparison, other than the residential component, somewhat like the Woodmont design, a sense of a lot of cluster, a lot of village, a lot of density with green space and such, and that, of course, certainly this charrette was prior to the Woodmont proposal being out. What's really happening is...
Can you go back that slide for a second? Can you show people at home, maybe they were questioning the Pettingill Road, can you show them both where they are right now? So that's Pettingill and that one, how about on the other one?
There's one.
Yep.
And there's the other.
Interesting.
You recognize the little odd, the hard, I shouldn't call it odd, the elbow here, and there's the elbow there, excuse me.
There's a 20-year span between those two events, interestingly enough, there was a third charrette, I don't know if John could pull it out of the archives, but are almost exactly midpoint between those two dates, I think it was '03, there was another charrette that was done.
And I'm hoping to say it was also probably the same idea of fairly high clustering and mixed use, but not residential.
Right.
So, based on current inquiries, of which you've seen one in the paper about the one facility that's come to the planning board and gotten some preliminary, but just on what's kind of been in the pipeline, what's been kicking around, and as Kevin mentioned, different developers have been contacting him about what-if, what-if, there's a lot of interest in the TIF district and things happening. This is the kind of what we thought just a year ago, and then what's being talked about today. The underlying map is the one you just saw from the 2012 master plan, what we're showing here are four inquiries that are in the pipeline, I don't even, you know, if they're not, I don't know if they're prospects or possibilities, but just their inquiries, what-if, what-if. And what you can see is, is that the buildings are farther apart, they're standalone, and they're substantially larger, and I think all of these, all of them but maybe one, are talked about, are single-floor buildings. Logistics and distribution is becoming a real strength here, which is a, which is a good thing, it's one of the industries that's doing very well in the country. So one of the things this may suggest is what we thought was needed for infrastructure may not be what is needed for infrastructure, because larger, single-purpose buildings have a couple things, they have less overall traffic, they have... things. They have less overall traffic. They have much less traffic at peak times because you don't have people coming at, you know, it's much more a 24/7 world. Sewer water demands are different. They're more, they're less, plus they're less peaked also. You don't have the evening dinnertime phenomena. Drainage can be different because you're not designing drainage as much for villages as you are for site by site, although you still want to take advantage of shared drainage plants as much as you can. So all of those questions about what exactly is necessary have been, are kind of back on the table because of what's really, we think really is beginning to happen versus what was perhaps suggested in '93 and in '13. So here are the projects that, under that big umbrella of what could happen, are kind of five categories. The road and traffic fixes, the extension of the town trail system, acquisition and securing of any rights away, sewer, be it intercept or connections, and water and other utilities, broadband, sidewalks, lighting, whatever. The thinking of the TIF financing now, we've said, well, it was going to be 12.4 million, and we were going to do everything. And now we're saying, maybe it doesn't need to be. Maybe we can do a mixture of public-private. Maybe we can do things in phases. So this is, you'll start seeing some of the ranges. As far as the road and traffic fixes, again, it could still be up as 8.5, but we decided to do the road that was discussed all along with the limited access and the 4.4, kind of five lanes. We've also talked about maybe if things happen fast enough, you wouldn't have to do anything. That if developers came in and said, gee, we want to do everything, we wouldn't have to do something. I think we would argue that there might be some quality control issues there, but we're open to the idea of zero if that's what makes sense. On the trail, we've budgeted a couple hundred thousand dollars, but we might find a major employer come in and say, gee, this is important enough to our employees to have a trail system that we'll pay for it, or we'll pay for it at the backend for impact fees or such. If the town's going to do it, of course, this would be a good time to do it because, again, you're paying for it with that 80% money instead of 21% money. Rights away, I think we're still expecting that it should not cost the town anything. As to sewer, we talked about that being 4.5 million on the bond. There is an existing $2 million escrow in the sewer fund capital budget. So some of that may be able to be used here. So that might bring that number down. I think we all know that we want to be very careful about using townwide funds for one area. Don't want to go down the road again unless we're really sure we can do that. Also, the same issue with if the private sector wants to do it themselves, and we find a system that works, zero is okay too. We did have a productive meeting with the City of Manchester to talk about both water and sewer. They have some concerns about what they call piecemealing, that it not be seen as, they'd much rather have an integrated design, integrated flow. But if we're open to the idea that if we don't need to do something, let's not do it. And then as far as water and utilities, right now, we're planning that, as far as water especially, that that would also be zeroed to the town because right now, it's envisioned that the developers pay, and they pay to, and it's built by the City of Manchester. They're actually the people who contract the construction of the water. And the water's already kind of in the area, so it's an extension. However, going the other way, there may even be an option that if the town wanted to finance it and recoup it, it might be more efficient. That way, you might get better quality control. So I'm not suggesting doing it if you don't need to, but it's something I think we'll just at least talk to both developers and the City of Manchester about as an option. So you see now, we're getting to where, the cap is still where it was, at 12.5, but I think we'll try to be as open as we can to alternatives that might either be less and/or be less and/or phased. So here's, we talked about the road, the traffic and trails, that the town would pay for it with the tax incremental financing, plus any grants, plus any escrow, plus any owner money upfront from developer exactions, plus any owner-users from the backside for fees, any other source. And we're saying all of those together must equal to where the resulting debt flow hits that, the neutral cash flow requirement. So I'm going to show you in a minute all the different things we're looking at as far as sources of funds. As far as the sewer, we're going to look at carefully what that town escrow of 2 million can be used for, see if there's any grant funding, town bonding, and any user and connection fees. User fees typically are a little more upfront. Connection fees are obviously later when it's constructed and you, they pay for their portion of the allocation. And then water utilities, just I mentioned a minute ago, we assume that the City of Manchester is going to get paid by the owner and users for the most part, unless the town finds that the bonding is favorable to itself for quality control or even for that enterprise fund kind of thinking. I promised a couple of you that we would show you our spreadsheet. This is not a live version of it, and it's probably the Counselor's only one who can read the small print. But this is the sort of way, thing we're running it through. These are all potential capital expenses from road one to expansion to utilities to, so those are expenses. These are sources of possible funds coming in that are not property tax. These are now projections of incremental tax revenue coming in at different square foot assessed values. So you have, you can see the difference. You have some that are $70 per square foot and some that are 100. And you can see all the fields to the right are blank. That's intentional just because we wanted to show you the worksheet. But as those inquiries become more or less real, we start doing forecasting. The result being, you know, here is money going out, here's money we had, here's money coming in, the difference, and then what that means for both the quarterly interest payment and then also the accumulated. And one of the other things we did, it's a little bit different. We're doing it by quarter. And this spreadsheet goes on past the other room. We're doing the first three years because that is the maximum amount that we talked about, about an interest-only bond if we need to do that. And the reason quarters are real important to look at versus just annual, remember, the first time we showed you was annual, it looked pretty good, is that you have some interesting phenomenas about when does the tax year start, and if you get your increased tax bill today, when do you actually start paying it, and when does the bid go out versus the contractor getting money, and is it front-loaded or back-loaded. So we wanted to really be careful about looking at it on a quarterly basis instead of just doing annualized summaries. But those are the categories we're looking at. And every time we do this, we do a scenario, we put different numbers in. And it's got to get to where Kevin's pretty sure at the bottom that it says a positive number. Okay, actions needed going forward. The TIF district adoption, it has to be done before April 1st at the latest because that's when the new assessed values are issued. So if you don't pick up anything before today, and then you lose it. And as I said, there sooner is better because there have been challenges to that April 1st deadline for things that are picked up between April 1st and April 1st. So if it's adopted sooner, there's no question that you're picking it up. If you wait till April 1st, someone can come in and say, no, you're doing it retroactively. So I would recommend sooner is better on that. But April 1st is the date that the assessed values are set. The bond vote would be this coming March in 2014, and/or could be in subsequent years for subsequent phases. Once again, you've set the umbrella. You don't have to do it all in the first year. So if we find a way of phasing things, you could do, here's your cap, and then here's what we do in '14, '15, '16. Again, we only act after the rights aways are secured. The rights aways, by the way, will need to be secured with some time conditions, I presume, where, you know, if the town can't make something happen in 20 years, the rights away revert back. But it's also got to be long enough that, you know, we can put things in effect. We have to have school board and county commission hearings much like this. There's two school board meetings in November that I hope to be on one or both agendas if I can. The council votes the district, both in the enabling and in the specific. Then between now and the actual decision about the bond, you'll have bond council review documentation. The CFO will, treasurer will fix a bond rate and terms, so you'll know exactly what the term rate will be. And then the one, the last step is the, is the town manager issues his zero negative cash flow assessment to the council. Then you'd want to have the road and sewer construction start by July of 2014 to keep your existing permits. It's not the end of the world if they don't, but it would be nice not to have to reopen that topic again.
Excuse me. And if we do reopen that topic, what's the cost to the town to re-permit? Is there a cost associated to that?
No.
No?
No.
No?
Minimal, just an application fee, but not a.
I think that the issue for cost might be what if. If nobody makes a major challenge to that being extended again, then it would be, I think we're just kind of thinking, we would not open that door if we didn't have to. And then the ERZ, that has to be in place by the summer 31st. Okay, next steps. We're almost there. The process going forward is school board and county hearings. We'll establish the baseline assessed value at the adoption because that's the start point. Using that spreadsheet and our projections and planning board permits and stuff, we'll do the, determine a TIF revenue stream, and then set the best terms rate for the bond recommendation for the town meeting, and then establish a TIF advisory board. Additional questions for the staff to take care of? Is this two or four lanes? And what's the traffic demand going to be? And can we do two lanes now and two lanes later? Or is that not much of a savings? We've begun asking some of those questions. Decide if there's phasing so that we can borrow less upfront and accrue funds as they come in for subsequent phases. Final sewer and drainage placement. There's the question of building access to the airport-owned land, the same time we're building, if we are building a road, and exactly what's the water utility situation going to be. So the council votes are to establish the district, both enabling and then a specific site plan. That's where we're at tonight. At a future date, to recommend a TIF bond at town meeting. You're going to want to know then terms and rates and answers to a lot of those questions I just brought up a minute ago. Third, actions to adopt that ERZ in this calendar year and adopt RSA 49C if needed to recoup costs. And I haven't spent much time talking about 49C tonight, but I think I described it last time. That's the authorization that allows a town to charge a pro-rata share to developers that hook onto town infrastructure. So if it costs you a million bucks to do something, and later someone wants to buy 10% of that road or 10% of that sewer line or water line, you can charge them 10% on that, on 49C. So if the council decides to go that way, it's a whole nother conversation we need to have. It's a way of recouping costs from the private side. And that, I think, is it? And I'd be happy to answer questions and appreciate your attention.
Actually, don't you have to do something a lot sooner than that? Because don't you have to put any bond scheduled for March of 2014, early January?
Yes. Yeah. So we'd have to act sooner than later if we were going to determine that we wanted to.
Get it on the warrant, yeah.
Any other questions from the council?
What's our investment to date up there? We know?
I think we just have the impact studies that we've done.
What were the amounts?
John, Yanos?
Our investment so far is the design of the road. It was around $236,000 and $150,000 came from all of their house.
There were the interest was, you know, and that was established, you know, many years ago, almost 10 years ago. That was the article to design it. So that's our investment to the project.
And on that eight million dollars on the road, is that designed for two lanes or four?
That's for four lanes.
That's for four, so that's.
That's for four lanes. There's a full buildup, four lanes, two major intersections, you know, an industrial drive and then next one in the middle, and then a third one in a, so actually three intersection, but two major ones.
So if it was possible to go to two lanes, would we have to pay another $150,000 or $200,000?
Yes, it will be, definitely will have to be redesigned. The road, I don't know exactly right now the price for the redesign, but yes, it's possible to, you know, to build two-lane road and, you know, reduce the cost substantially. And then treat this as a first phase, and then, you know, expand when the traffic will expand. And the four lanes was designed for full buildup, looking 20 years ahead. But an area like that will open, and in five years, you will notice that it will be ongoing very quickly to full buildup.
So the design, a two-lane road design would be a four-lane road on paper?
What two-lane design will look like, that we will leave the, right away for four lanes, obviously. We will leave the drainage design for four lane, and we will leave the media alone. And we will pave only and build embankment for two lanes on each side of the, of the media and the shoulder, and slope it down to the drainage. Then later on, we'll be able to build up the embankments and put additional lanes. When we were in the past, we were looking at reducing the cost and building two lanes and building a full embankment, and just only saving, on the saving on the pavement was not enough. So we are looking at substantial saving. So we will have to reduce the embankments. But it makes only sense to leave the drainage in the area that you don't have to rip it out and again, build again.
So the, so the money that we paid a while back for the four-lane, we can't use any of that design at all?
No, it would be, that design will be used for full buildup.
Okay.
So if you use now the first phase, you will have to design the first phase. So spend the money on designing the first phase. But the full buildup, it's correct plans and will be, it doesn't have to be redesigned.
So it's not being thrown away, basically?
No, there's definitely not thrown away, no.
What are the questions from the council?
Well, if you went, if we did the two lanes, you're going to tell me that it's more cost-effective to wait now or wait later to put in the other two lanes than it is to build it out?
You're asking the wrong guy, I think.
Well, I know what you're, okay.
From the past, I definitely, you know, obviously, if the TIF will not pass for four lanes, then, you know, and we want to, you know, to do this, then we are looking, you know, how we can reduce the cost of the TIF. But, this Tom is laughing, you know, yes, if you wait, you know, I would, you know, I would, you know. Plus, we could maybe do this, that if the prospects are coming right away, that right now, we have only development that can pay off for two lanes. But within a year or six months, we already see another developer coming, and that could pay for more. Why not changing immediately? Okay, let's put a change order, let's start building the full, because we can pay off and can support. Whatever will come, we'll support a full buildup. We'll support eight million. So that the option that you could look at that, you know, in your spreadsheets.
Right.
And that could be also good enough, a possibility.
I think the other thing we want to make sure we do is look at the traffic generation numbers now that we know more what's really happening. And so it'll be more updated traffic numbers that'll drive that, where the 1993 numbers, again, envision a much denser, more people, more cars than they are now.
I think it's important to remember too, that we're looking to stay tax-neutral or tax-positive with this. So really, a lot of it's being driven by how quickly the development goes into there. If the development can support a full build-out in year, you know, one, two, and three, then it makes sense to do that. But obviously, if it doesn't, we're not going to go for full build-out right away, right away.
I guess the only concern that I'm sure people at home even saying, okay, you have four lanes, eight million, divide that by two, two lanes, four million, but it's going to cost you another six million. You know what I mean? That's how to do the other two lanes later on. So that's, I understand we're trying to get it done, but, you know, when you, when you ask the question, how much, it's not just like splitting it in half. You know what I mean? So.
Any other questions from the council?
And we would certainly have a lot better answers to all those questions before saying anything on the bonding.
Okay. Other questions to, the order of execution of this process, are we in the right order now voting on the TIF, on a TIF resolution tonight?
The enabling and then the resolution, correct. It was a second reading.
We don't need to have the school or county hearings done prior to?
All they have to do is have had the chance to attend. And so they, that's what today would be.
Oh, I see, okay.
We certainly, I think anything we hear from those hearings, we'll certainly bring back.
Yeah. There's nothing in the process that binds the council There's nothing in the process that binds the council to have to wait for those hearings. I would remind you as well that at any time, you can amend this district, you can even do away with this district at any time as well. So, you know, if you were to vote and adopt it tonight, the school board and county hearings would still happen afterwards and certainly any new information can be brought back before the council.
I think it's two different things, right? One is putting a stamp on the area and the hearings with the school and the commission are basically to say, okay, now that we have this district, is everybody on the same page to go forward with the TIF or in a bond?
Yeah, let me speak to two things as far as there's specific things. One, we had heard, and I don't remember how it got to me, that there was some concern from school board members or such, that the district was too large. That's one of the reasons we took that large section out. And two, in the proposal, we are proposing a specific revenue sharing, for lack of a better term, that basically says, once there is positive cash flow for a full calendar year, after that, the, any surplus will then go, get split 50/50 between accelerating payoff back into the district or adding the extra lanes or whatever you decide to do. And the other 50% goes back into the general fund to be used by school, county, and town. So in the proposal in front of you, we're proposing that. So they might come back and say, gee, we'd like you to put 60% back in, we'd like you to put 25% back in. I've been towns where the schools have said, don't put anything back to us, just accelerate the thing so we know. So that is the sort of thing I'm expecting here, Mr. Vice Chairman. But I think the parameters of the district and the, because we're asking so many questions, I don't think there'll be.
Right. I think the council is just.
Certainly as a courtesy, we want to be sure that.
We just want to make sure, the council wants to make sure that we're reaching out to all our constituents.
Yes.
To include the school and county governments, also include the landowners, the airport, whatever. So we want to, we want to make sure everybody has a fair shake to give input.
And there will be a step here that, once you establish the district, even if you don't get to the bonding, you can establish your advisory board right off the bat.
Good. Any other questions from the council before we go to the public?
We'll come back to the council and have more discussion after we engage the public. So we're going to open it up to public comment now on Resolution 2013-11, which is the establishment of the Economic Development and Revitalization Zone that you saw the picture of behind me. And also Resolution 2013-12, which is the adoption of the airport TIF district. Anyone like to just come up, come right up, please?
Yanja, excuse me, 28 Wedgwood. You can stop me if my questions are a little too far off topic. But I was just wondering, maybe I missed it in the last couple of months. What's the status of the $8.2 million Tiger V grant for Pen Gill Road area? Is there any news on that or how, would that affect this at all?
Stu, you have a status on that?
We haven't heard. And so the ones that have been awarded have heard. So the premise is, that's not good news. But if you notice in the possible sources of funds, grants was, DOT grant was one. And that's why if we got 8.4, that, then we would be at the zero option. The Tiger Grant, by the way, does, in essence, require at least a 50% match and oftentimes more. So it would be great if we heard yes, but we haven't heard no, but we're anticipating no just because everyone who got a yes heard two months ago.
Got it.
Can you stay there for a second? Can I ask?
Ask through me.
Right, that's why I'm looking at you. You said that the Tiger V grant usually awards 50% of the amount that's requested?
They look for a matching award from the community.
At least 50.
If it was 8.2, I thought we needed 8.2 to complete the road with the town's.
So if we got a Tiger Grant for, if we wanted 8.2, the Tiger Grant would be for 4.1, we'd have to match that.
But you have to say upfront that you're going to come up with 4.1 to get an 8 point, to get 4.1 from the federal.
Okay, so it's not, we're not looking for 8.2 from the?
No. They're not just giving you 4.1, they want to see you put up 4.1.
Yeah, can I?
Go ahead.
We actually did ask for 8.2 because there is a way to ask for 100%. They've just never given 100% to anybody. So because we couldn't provide specific match, because you obviously know that it voted it, we said 8.2 is what it costs. If you want to give it to us, that would be wonderful. But we're going through this process of establishing a TIF district, we're going to come back, if it happens in the bonding next. So the premise of the narrative is, yes, we understand that this is not going to go forward without a match, but because we had to fill in the box with something, we had to put 100%.
Yeah, because I thought I read in the grant application that, something about going for, before the town voters for a certain amount.
I think what Stu just clarified is the element of real, real, real-life experience.
When you talk about this type of tax financing for development in this area, will this now set a precedent or open up this type of financing in other sections of town, such as for?
Not necessarily a precedent, but as mentioned earlier, there's a maximum amount that the community can devote to this, this type of activities. Stu, you can probably give me better detail of the numbers there.
Yes. It has to be for, let me go back, remember, it has to be for publicly-owned infrastructure. So it has to be roads, sewer, water, sidewalks. It can't be more than 10% of the.
5% for one district, 10%.
5% for one district, 10% for all the districts in the town. This is, this is like 4.5 now, because we made it smaller. And 10% of the assessed value, and this is well below that. So you have enough under your 10% cap to do about the same in one or in combination.
So to answer your question, there are some limits. And also, from a precedent-setting standpoint, unlike case law or rulings like this, this is fully in the hands of the voters because they're the ones that hold the purse strings in terms of at the, in the March election.
So it's on a case-by-case basis, put in front of the town voters. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public, comment? Yes, please come right up. Just ask you to state your name and address for the record.
Ray Brezlin, 3 Gary Drive.
Welcome.
One thing I'd like to ask is, what the necessity is from the town standpoint of assisting in developing this roadway? How is this going to benefit the town?
Were you here for the presentation earlier when our consultant, I went through that?
Yes, I did get here a little late, but yeah, I believe I heard most of it. But there was a lot of detail there. But could you tell me specifically how this is going to benefit the town?
I can tell you in general, that this would help accelerate development, make it, make it happen faster than it would happen through serendipity. And also would control what the development looked like. For example, without the, without the assistance of the design of the community, what you might expect to happen is as buildings become built, there'll be what we call cul-de-sac-type access roads built to them. That will be the least expensive way to get trucks or cars to that building. And so you'll have, if you can envision a series of cul-de-sacs coming off the main, the main roads that are there now, that would probably landlock much of the thousand or so acres that are there and certainly not optimize the amount of potential development that could eventually be there and eventual tax revenues that would come to the community.
Yeah, well, okay, but, you know, potentially, maybe there could be some return to the town in tax revenue. But, you know, we're talking about financing this, meaning the town, without, at this point, without any other assistance from, say, the airport, say, the city of Manchester, from the state, from the Tiger Grant, which apparently that Tiger Grant, you would have to assure the, them that you would have a matching grant. Well, I don't think you were able to do that.
No, if we, as part of the deal, if we went to the voters and they turned down a bond, then we'd lose the grant. That's how it would work. So if they granted us, if they said you're a winner of the grant.
Yeah.
Now you have to match, let's say they give us $2 million and we're going to match $2 million and we go to the voters and say, can we have $2 million for this match? And the voters say no, then those who own the funds for the Tiger Grant withdraw the money that they were going to give you and they don't give it to you.
Right, right. But I mean, say, today, tomorrow, whatever, you get a notification that, yes, you have been approved for that. However, do you have the money to put up, to match?
The approval would be contingent upon the match.
Okay, so, but are they going to wait till town meeting in March?
Yes.
They are. They're going to hold that money for the town until it's approved.
That's how it works.
Or they're not going to then give it to someone else?
It would be contingent upon the match. And that we would, as part of the application, would be during the March election.
Yeah. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I would also add that, you know, over the last two months, when I've been meeting with the developers and talking to them about the design and construction of Pettingill Road, I can tell you that both myself and Stu have been very upfront, almost aggressive in letting them know that we expect to have this to be a private-public partnership and not a solely public endeavor. And to that extent, it certainly is my intention to come back to the council at some point to show them what the buy-in from the private side is because we do think it truly should be a partnership. In terms of, you know, talking about, well, is this going to bring development or not? Let me tell you what not having Pettingill Road has done for what Londonderry has lost. I'm sure you're probably familiar with the new development along Route 114 near the Bedford Village Inn, the Carper Door Restaurant. There's an assisted living facility there now. There's a medical place, Optics, I believe. There's a credit union. There's probably a Dunkin' Donuts as well. All of that was slated for Pettingill Road. The developers who had a hand in that have a hand in Pettingill as well. They wanted to bring that to Londonderry. But because the road is not built and because of the timeframe in dealing with bringing develop, bringing business into the areas, they have to go with what's available. That land and the access was available there in Bedford before Pettingill was available. So Londonderry missed out on that opportunity. The longer we wait as a town to try to get this road built, the more opportunity for development we're going to continue to miss out on. But I would agree with you that, you know, this shouldn't solely just be a public endeavor, that there needs to be buy-in from the private side as well.
Right. But at this point, you don't have any commitment from any developer that says they're going to pitch in.
Well, let me, let me say that we can't discuss that in public. We have, we have all engaged in non-disclosure agreements with some private developers who have some, expressed some interest. However, it's a very sensitive topic because if they're going to do something that affects their business and their employees and the location of where their employees might work or might not work, it becomes a very difficult internal business decision for those developers. So I can tell you that we do, we have had a very active discussion with a number of large developers, large businesses that are very interested. And I can't really go much beyond that because we're, we are, are under a legal obligation not to do that, not at this point. I can also say that the council has set up a premise among itself and with the town manager that, that we will not support this effort going forward if we don't find it to be either cash-neutral or cash-positive to the community. So if the scenario plays out as such that the businesses, to your point, aren't lined up, aren't in the pipeline, is the vernacular that we're using. If they're not lined up in the pipeline, ready to go, then you'll find that this council won't support this effort. So that's the, that's the assurance, I guess, that we can give you at this point.
Yeah, well, you know, here's the thing that comes across my mind, and that is, we have already, as a town, committed to Woodmont. And that's going to be a big project that is going to affect the town for a long period of time. We don't know exactly all the particulars on that and how it's going to affect it. We don't know when it's going to start, you know, you know, that's all going to come down the road. But the town is going to have to deal with that. And this Pen Gill Road, I agree, there is considerable potential there. But, you know, I wonder here, you know, we as a town, are we in the development business? Are we in the business of taking care of our people here? Okay?
Yes, one of the, one of the goals of this council has been to try to, for its existing residents and future residents, to provide a stable, if not lower, tax rate than you're currently working with. And one of the goals here is to find tax-positive development that will add to our tax base and potentially lower our tax rate because of the fact that industrial, commercial-type development is typically tax-positive. In other words, we get more money in in taxes than we have to pay out in services. Unlike residential development, which typically is the flip, where because of school-aged children, we typically pay out more in taxes than that property pays in in taxes. So in, the one thing about Woodmont that hopefully is somewhat comforting is that we do have a developer's agreement now in place with Woodmont that assures us that if that development is to, does eventually go tax-negative, that the developers are going to make up the difference and keep it at least tax-neutral. I can't tell you that it's going to be tax-positive, but I can tell you it's not going to be tax-negative. On the, on the, the commercial industrial land up by the airport, which happens to be the largest undeveloped block of land of that type in the state, right next to an airport or next to two highways, the potential from economic experts like Mr. Arnett over here and from others that we've spoken to tell us that that is literally a goldmine. If we could somehow unlock it and bring it to market, that's a, that's a significant potential to help contribute to our tax revenues and potentially lower the amount of property taxes being paid by residential taxpayers by having more tax money being paid by industrial, commercial taxpayers.
I understand that. And, you know, that, that is the desire to have industrial that's going to contribute and perhaps maybe not lower the tax rate, but allow it from escalating too much. But there is another question too, and that is, I believe that, that area, which I've heard anywhere from 300 and some acres to over 1,000 acres, what is the acreage we're talking here?
It's about 1,000.
About 1,000? So we're talking about the extended area that goes to the, let's see, that would be, what direction would that be? That would be to the east?
It's the east and west, south of the airport.
I mean, what we were talking about initially was on the west, right? Yes, towards Route 3?
Right.
But now we're talking about extended area, east of the airport. So the total acreage is like 1,000?
Yes.
It's all, it goes east to west, but it's all south of the airport?
Um, yes and no. Yes and no. If we look at the runway, it's not all south of the airport.
Well, certainly not north of the airport.
It's not north of the airport, correct, right. But a part of that land, the area that is to the east, I'm sorry, to the west, isn't that sitting over an aquifer?
I don't know the geological makeup over there.
Yeah, it is, but again, it's all, again, Ray, the aquifers are located in this vicinity. There are high recharge rates for water. Again, this is, this has been industrially zoned for a significant amount of time. It's a gateway business district. It's been identified industrial in the town's planning processes.
Okay, but, you know, an aquifer is extremely valuable to the town. Now, that land may not be owned by the town, but if there's an aquifer there, and we're talking about supplying water and down the road, we're talking about supplying water to the town, that we're either going to have to have our own water facility, our own wells, or we're going to have to have a water treatment plant, or we're going to have to pay Manchester for the water. I think that's something we really need to look at.
But that doesn't affect what we're talking about tonight. You know, you may be correct, there's an aquifer there, and anybody who seeks to develop land on that that has the aquifer still has to get Planning Board approval to do their development. This is simply whether we're going to have a tax increment finance district here.
Yeah.
Bonding is something later, if it actually gets on the ballot in March, and then voters have to approve that by 60%.
Yeah, yeah.
The issue of the aquifer, I believe, the notional plan of the development is that the water will, that supports the development will not be drawn from the, from the aquifer. It will come in from the Manchester Water Works through a municipal water supply, which comes basically from the lake. And, and that also, about 15% of the community now is serviced by Penachuck Water Works as a public water supply. So I don't think there's any plans in our future to develop, to develop our own community water supply or water treatment system to, to supply public water to our citizens. We have, we have the Penachuck in Nashua, which currently supplies, like I said, 15%. And this particular development would be serviced by Manchester Water Works.
Yeah, I understand that.
Let's try to help you a little bit. Is there any construction that can be done there at that area once TIF goes by, once we stop building, that will disturb, disturb the aquifers? Is there anything that Planning Board may prevent from happening legally?
As it was planned out, any project going forward will have to go through the regular Planning Board process. And you have an existing environmental permit that permits what we're talking about, which includes consideration of all these factors.
No, I understand that, but, okay, so, we said that about a couple times, but really-
So yes, this is permitted, and anything going forward would have to receive a permit that would deal with aquifers, wetlands, and everything else.
So we've had the environmental impact analysis done already-
On the existing site for this-
I think, believe, what Janos was talking about, part of the upfront costs that we've already spent that would be expiring in 2014, is that, is that part of the package that expires?
It's our permit, right.
So by doing that, we've already established that it would not hurt the aquifer there?
Correct, this is a permitted use.
Okay. Any additional questions, sir?
You know, here's, here's the thing, and that is that, you know, the town is expanding, and its needs are expanding. Its water and sewer needs are expanding. We're talking about relying on other towns and private companies for supplying that. You know, there may be a time in the future, within the next 20 years, where those towns are going to reach, you know, they're going to have to supply their own town with their water and sewer. And, and they may not want to accept or supply water and sewerage to Londonderry. Where, and consequently, Londonderry is going to have to supply their own. If that comes to pass, you know, this aquifer, you know, is, is going to be something you should take into account. And also, you're talking about developers that are interested. I mean, if you have somebody that is interested in, say, like, let's say, computer or PC board designs, you know what I mean? Okay, so that may not be allowed in that area. So that's going to eliminate them, okay? Also, say somebody comes in and says, we're going to put in, we're going to buy this piece of property, okay? This is private-owned land, okay? Now whoever owns it now may have someone come to them and say, I want to buy this piece of property. And go to the state of New Hampshire and say, I want a permit to drill artesian wells into that aquifer and sell the water. What control are you going to have over that?
That will have to be handled by the, by the state. The state governs that activity.
Well, you know, if the state says, yeah, fine, we'll, we'll give that to you.
And we have, we'll have to-
Then that's the name of that to them.
We'll have to communicate with our several state representatives that we have to, to help, help our community.
That, that use would have to go through the same permitting process as any other request. So if it was a water aquifer or if it was a building, any use will have to go through the, your full Planning Board process. And if it involves extraction of a natural resource, it may also involve New Hampshire DES. But any scenario this gentleman brings up would have to go through the whole site plan permitting process.
So that would be the time that you would come to the hearings and you would speak your opinion then and fight, fight that battle at that point?
Well, okay, but I, I want you guys, with all due respect, to take that into account, what I'm talking about, water and sewer.
You have, the, the scenario you just brought up about the, about the property owner could drill wells and take water out, there's nothing that would-
Yeah, if you want an example of that-
It would be nothing that would prevent that from happening now, given the fact that they could be permitted to do that.
Right.
So this doesn't change that scenario. That scenario could happen tomorrow, as long as the permits are in place. Also, it could happen in this scenario as well.
And I'm not certain that the Planning Board would have jurisdiction over that.
The Planning Board would consider the, the environmental permit they'd have to get from the state. The Planning Board does require the applicants to get the appropriate permits by the state, and they'd have to bring that, show evidence of that to the Planning Board.
An example of that would be in Stratton. They put in a golf course. And they went to the state and required, asked to have an extraction of, say, 200,000 gallons a day from an aquifer underneath there. And they got that in a very short period of time.
What you're describing then is, if you're saying the Planning Board doesn't have jurisdiction or has no ability to stop it, they have no ability to stop it. That's, that's the state that, what you've just said, is entirely doing that.
Yeah.
So I'm kind of confused with-
Okay, well, I-
If I can just finish, sir?
Certainly.
The Planning Board handles land use for the town.
Right.
If the Planning Board has no authority, which you apparently agree with-
I don't know that.
Let me finish, okay, but assuming they don't have authority-
Yeah.
There's not really much that we can do. What you described in Stratton was the state taking action, apparently disregarding, if you ought to be believed, the locality that was opposed to this. So I'm not sure what you're asking us to do on some hypothetical that you preface with, we can't, the Planning Board and the town council lacks authority to do anyway.
I'm suggesting that you should take a look at that and see what your authority is. And if that's the case, that someone can come in and say, tomorrow, I'm going to the state, I'm going to get the permit for that, that you talk to the people at state beforehand, and make sure that, that, if possible, you do have control over that.
Well, if the town, if the Planning Board does have control of it, then it will go through the normal permitting process.
Okay, but we don't know at this point.
Well, no, nor do we know that some unknown company is going to come and drill wells to take water out of the aquifer either.
No, we don't. No, we don't, that's true.
Okay, so I'm just kind of confused as why we should start investigating a hypothetical.
Right, I was just going to say that. I think that, I would, I guess, sir, I'm happy to entertain your questions, but I would, let's restrict it to what's in front of us and not, I mean, we could be here all night talking about hypotheticals, and I'd rather not do that.
Okay.
So, so if you have questions on the, on the resolutions that are before us, based on the, on the, or based on the presentation that you saw, we're happy to entertain your questions, but hypotheticals are endless in discussion.
Okay, so if I understand, you're going to vote this evening to recommend that this go to a ballot on the town?
No, no, what we're going to, we have two resolutions in front of us. One is to establish a economic revitalization district, which gives the, will help the business owners in that district to apply for some tax credits and some tax reductions with the state, not with the town, but with the state. And the other resolution we're voting on is establish, whether or not we want to establish this TIF district. Now, at a later time, if, if the council so desires, they may, we may put a, a motion, a, rather, a vehicle on the ballot to vote, to fund some amount for this TIF district. But that's not what we're voting on tonight, and that's not what we're recommending that we do tonight. We still need to see more information. We still need to hear from more constituents, decide how we're going to go forward. But we, what we, what we may vote on, or we may, we may accept it or reject it tonight, but whether or not we want to establish this district.
Mr. Chair, just one clarification. The first resolution you spoke of is actually the enabling resolution to be able to declare a particular area a TIF district. So the ERZ that you were speaking of will come at a later council meeting before the end of the year to expand that for the, for the businesses. But the two resolutions both pertain to the TIF. The first one is the enabling resolution in order to declare the district, and the second resolution declares the district itself.
Any other questions, sir?
Is there, Exit 5, is that also a prime development area?
Exit 5, I would say it is. I mean, there are a lot of, there's a lot of development there right now, but more development could happen there. There's a, there's a housing development that's been, recently been approved for that area, right along the highway.
Yeah, I mean, that seems as though that's a prime area because of the access, you know, to the exit there, et cetera.
There's been some inquiry, inquiries of the land that's in front of the Vista Ridge apartment complex.
Is there something would be considered to be a TIF district also?
There is, there are no proposals for TIF in that area, but there has been, there's been some off-and-on inquiries about developers putting some commercial development in front of the Vista Ridge apartment area.
Okay, just one other thing, and I don't want to take up any more time. And that is, you know, I hear this term, tax-positive, tax-negative, tax-neutral. The only one that appeals to me is tax-positive. Tax-neutral, is there any benefit to a tax-neutral development or?
Well, I, I think actually what they were talking about, not so much tax-neutral going forward. I think what they were talking about is during the time period you're paying a bond for road construction.
Yeah.
There is enough revenue from this tax increment financing district to cover the debt service on the bond. At some point, the bond will be paid for, and therefore, there wouldn't be an associated cost with that. At that point, it would be tax-positive. But in the interim, the, the payments on the bond would be offset by increases in the real estate property values in the tax increment finance district.
Yeah, but we're also talking about using some of the general fund, maybe 50% of the general fund, to pay the bond?
No, sir.
Certainly not.
No, no?
No, no, what they, what the gentleman mentioned about the 50% was, at some point, if there's enough revenue from the tax increment financing district to pay, to pay the bond's debt service in particular, and then there's an excess over that amount, that would be split between 50% to paying down the bond, additional principal, paying that in advance, and the remaining 50% would be shared with the town and the school district, and I guess the county.
Let me give you a math example. For example, let's say that we, we recommend to the town that we, we let a bond for this effort. And let's say the bond payment is $500,000 a year. If we get 500, in the first year, if we get $500,000 in new tax revenue from this district, then that's tax-neutral. We get the new $500,000 with the taxes, and we turn around and pay the $500,000 bond payment. Now, in year two, if we get $600,000 from the tax district, because it's growing, we, we receive 600,000, and we have a $500,000 bond payment to make. We make that $500,000 bond payment, we now have $100,000 of tax-positive money. Then we decide, what do we want to do with that money? Should we split it? Should we send half to the school, half to the town, some to the county? We have to decide that. Then in year three, let's say we get $1 million in tax revenue from that area. We still have to pay the $500,000 bond payment, so now we have $500,000 of tax-positive revenue. And then, again, we have to decide how we want to split up that revenue. Do we want to use it all to pay off the bond, pay down the bond faster? Do we want to split it 50/50 with the school district, 50/50 with the town? So those are all, those are good decisions to have to have before us, because it's additional money that the community wouldn't have had otherwise that we can use to help lower either school district costs or, or town costs.
Yeah. But if this goes forward, it'll also be under a PUD. Or very well could be, yes?
Did you say PUD?
Perhaps I used the wrong terminology.
No, you might have used the right one, I just didn't hear you. Was it PUD?
The PUD is in the Woodmont area.
The thing that's in Woodmont?
There is no PUD in this, in this area.
But, I mean, a developer could apply. I mean, it is available, right, throughout the town?
Again, the district has no effect on your planning regulations whatsoever. So what's there is there, what isn't there, isn't there.
So if he has over 100 connected acres, he can do PUD?
So whether the district is adopted or not, any owner can do, can do whatever the planning regulations allow today, has, has no effect on your regulations on land use, zero.
So if he has the authority to go for a PUD today, he'd have authority to go for it tomorrow? So there's no, this has no impact on PUDs?
Right. Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, hope we, hope we answered your questions.
Good luck with your decisions.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public?
Your classes, sir.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll get that class time, too. Thank you.
Welcome back, counselor.
I don't need the title anymore, but thank you.
Name and address for the-
Brent Farmer, 106 Chase Road, Londonderry. Just a couple of questions. One, to help me clear up my own confusion. The agenda doesn't mention that the public hearing's going to cover 2013-11.
We, we warned that back in-
You warned it at the first reading?
On the 23rd of September.
I just, somebody else had a copy of the packet.
We had a typo on the agenda.
And it was also, it was also noticed in the newspaper, public notice as well.
That was going to be my next question, until I saw the date on here. It was warned on the 21st, 23rd, so. Mr. Chairman, I guess the question I got was, a statement was made about amending the district, that it can happen at any time. Can it happen after a bond is approved? Can it happen after a bond is approved? Or is the bond going to bind the district as of the date of the bond?
I don't know the answer to that question. It's something we have to-
It'd be something I'd like to, somebody could research that and-
Would you mind repeating it for Stu?
Yeah, if the, because the comment was made that the district could be, once it's established, assuming it gets established, it could be amended at any time, right? And you're gonna try to vote on this potentially March 2014, right? The voters approve. Can you amend the district after the bond has been approved? You can.
Yes, can I condition what happens when you do? You can amend the district anytime the district is still on the books. The district will be on the books until any debt is paid off, or if there's never any debt incurred, the council can get rid of it anytime they want. But once you incur a dollar of debt, until you pay it off, the district's there. The reason you don't typically want to amend districts later, which is why I put more of the what ifs in earlier, is that, use the vice chairman's example there of having 500 plus another 100 after a couple of years. If, once you amend, the financial ticker, for lack of a better term, starts over. So, the new starting number is not down here, it's at that 600. So, for the amended part, you would lose the increment you've gotten to date. In other words, you're really starting the financial thing over again every time you do the amendment. What that does is keeps a town from rolling a district over perpetually and never returning that funds to the general fund.
So, there's a financial disincentive to amend the district?
There's a disincentive if you have bonded correctly.
Right.
If you have bonded, so-
And if there's an increase in increment, because you, you don't lose it, but you can't count it for that, for that increment.
I also think you might have some trouble with bond counsel in doing that. You told the public who were buying the bond, it was gonna be financed through this method. You may have made representations you can't change.
My concern is not so much bond counsel and things like that, those are all legalities you guys have to jump through hoops with, with legal and everything else. My concern is the way it's sold to the public, and let's just say that what was on the left was what you sell to the public, and I'm just using these for examples. What was on the left up here, August 2013, is what you're selling the public in March, and you revise it after they approve it to what's on the right. And what they bought was one map, and you changed it to something else.
See, that's what I'm, I'm not sure you can do because of the legality of-
And that's what I want to make, you know, that's what I'm like, really sort of looking for.
One is, to amend anything, you have to go through the process all over, as you did to adopt.
Sure.
So, we would have to have the hearings, you'd have to have the school board, you'd have to have, so it would be the same thing.
But in the meantime, you're sitting here with an approved bond for potentially 8.5.
Typically, if there is an amendment request, it is to make the district bigger and/or to do additional projects. So, what we have tried to, say in five years, someone says, boy, that intersection now, we'd like to do that better, or we'd like to have a fire retention pond or something. That's why we have listed as a lot of potential things upfront, so that the need perhaps to amend it later is minimized.
Okay. Next question, and I guess is the earlier that was mentioned, that the potential value of the roadway was eight and a half million. Has that price tag or estimate been updated lately? Is that a recent price?
Yes.
This sounds like the one that's been floating around for a while. Just seems to me like a-
Just go from Yanis, it's recently been-
Originally, the escalation was around 5% was included, and we are seeing from the past, the escalation was like 3%, so we left the number alone.
So, you established that? I'm sorry, I'll ask the question. So, the price, the 8.5 is an escalated value based on a value established one, two, five years ago, some point in time?
Yes.
And it's been escalated over time?
Yeah. And the escalation has been less than, than we thought it was gonna be original?
Can you pinpoint the year that the original price came from?
Remember the original year that we estimated that?
I think it was probably, you know, going four years back, five years back, four, five years back.
So, 2008, 2009, time period?
Okay.
Stu, question. If we, can we put a restriction on this TIF district, not to reduce it until the bond is paid off? Is that something that we can roll into the plan? We can expand it, but we can't reduce it? I know what you're saying about, you know, you get-
Just thinking, you're selling, it's a selling condition on getting a vote.
I mean, is that something that can be done?
I just hate to see things sold under one pretense.
Absolutely.
And then the pretense changes, and you're advertised tonight an ability to change the pretense. So, as one citizen, I'd prefer you not do that. That's disregarding whether I would be in favor of this or not.
I think the context it was offered in is up until the March vote. I think, I think what we're saying is that we're gonna hear from more constituents, and if there are compelling arguments to change the district one way or the other, but I think that we have the option to do that. I think there would be a real reluctance for a number of reasons to change it after a bond vote.
Right, and I'm one to tell you as a citizen that I would share that reluctance.
And I, and I, I know it's really easy to start thinking this way, that you see that and say, well, something's gonna happen in that, remember, that's a catchment area for the tax increments. It's not a zoning map, it's not, so it was designed to both anticipate where there might be public investment need over the next 20 years, and also areas we thought would have potential of incremental need.
I think the, our thinking is, the types of changes that we might make would be for the, how the excess money might be distributed down the road. So, maybe we give the school district a larger percentage than we originally had planned or whatever. I think those are the type of changes, I think, I don't think there's, we're thinking really about changing the map or anything along those lines.
And that, to answer your question, certainly you could put something in that says, instead of, it will absolutely be, you could say, a range of, to be determined every year, every two years. And so, then you're not changing the adopted language, you're saying, we did exactly what we said we were gonna do.
So, your comments led to another question. I'm gonna try to make this short, too, I gotta go home. But the, the resolution 2013-11 in the final whereas paragraph says that, "For each such district, the municipality shall establish a development program and a tax increment financing plan." Does your adoption of this resolution tonight go with an established plan, or does it say you're going to establish a plan?
I think what it does, it enables us-
To proceed.
Proceed to the plan.
Would the plan have to include those steps and those measures, such as the share between the town and school district general funds? Or would it be not a complete plan?
I'm sorry, the, sorry, the resolution adopting the map and the plan are in the resolution. So, there is a development plan, and that's why it says what we want to do with the-
Your financing plan's not in there?
No.
It is in the, in the general parameters, it is. What is, what is required is in that resolution.
You're talking about 2013-12, though.
Yeah.
He's talking about 2013-11. Right?
2011 is the enabling legislation-
Yeah.
-that enables us to adopt such a district.
Yeah.
2012 includes the plan.
And so, the 2012, the fourth, the fourth whereas actually talks about the development plan and making this plan actually part of the-
This public hearing is both, you're talking about together.
Right.
Yes.
So, is 2013-12, does the financing plan included in there already include the division of, of potential split?
Page three, yeah, of that.
Does it tell you you're giving it all to the general fund, or 50/50, or any of it going to the school district?
It gives an option.
So, it provides us an option? So, it's sort of an open? You could decide the option later.
It says, "Until such time as the captured assessed value as defined in Section 162-K-10 exceeds the amount paid on all debt, administration and escrow requires for one full fiscal year, the town shall utilize all 100% of the incremental proceeds to pay down debt directly into escrow," or into escrow, sorry. "After one full year of the captured assessed value above the amount required to meet all debt servicing, administration and escrow requirements, the remaining amount shall be evenly distributed 50% into an escrow to escalate the bond repayment, and 50% into the general fund accessible by the town, school, and county for operating and capital budgets as regularly adopted by their respective budget authorization processes."
But, okay, so it's 50/50, and then the 50 that goes to the general fund, you will later determine how much goes to town, school, and other.
Actually, I think it will probably go by the ratio of the tax rates.
It doesn't have to, but it-
Well, it's one way to do it, that would be one way to do it, and it seems like that, you know, off the cuff remark might be the most equitable way to do it, you know, from one perspective, so, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the public? Okay, bring it back to the council, any further comments before we take a vote?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think we have to look outside the box, and we have to look at it as a business. What we're trying to do is we're trying to stabilize and bring in more tax revenue. And this is from a, not from a government standpoint, but from a, from a business standpoint, this is a pretty sound plan. You know, you have Hooksett, you have Derry, you have Nashua, you have Bedford. Bedford, which we know has already taken development from us. Success comes with some risk. Is there risk in everything? Yes, there is. But this is a pretty sound plan, and there are other towns, we're not the, we're not the front runner here. We're taking a backseat, and until we do something like this, we're gonna continue taking a backseat.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, Stu, I actually have a question for you. This is, this comes up from the constituents quite often, and I bring a, I think, a good, a good argument, but I'd like to hear yours. How does this area differentiate? I guess the people that are trying to get into Lunedary, if you were to look at Jaxbridge, and you were to look at everything we've done up there over the past years, how does this differ from that? How is this a better area than the Jaxbridge area? I mean, I know I have my feeling, but I want to hear from you.
I don't know the Jaxbridge area well, I mean, I've seen what you've done with it, but my initial impression is that if you look at the inquiries in the construction of the last, construction the last couple of years, and the inquiries that are in the system, this seems to be coming a desired location for logistics and distribution. And I'm presuming it's because of new access road, the expansion of the interstate eventually, the, and the Penn and Gill connection, and the airport.
So, one of the things at Jaxbridge, it's near a highway, so, and everybody says, well, you know, we have a road really close by to that area, why isn't that exploding? And so, for the other four or five things that you just mentioned, airport?
Yeah, I think that area's doing okay, too. We recently had an inquiry from the state for someone looking for 240,000 square feet, and we showed them a spot at each because they're very comparable. So, I think there's some similarities, counselor, but this seems to be developing as a logistics distribution theme, for lack of a better term. And like most industry clusters, they tend to go where their, their others go, where I'm sure there's individual pros and cons. The other thing, this also probably has greater expansion potential, just more space. You can even put a half million square foot facility in some of these lots, and I don't know if there's any that would happen elsewhere.
Would be tight.
Is that, I mean, from your perspective, is that, does he nail it on the head as far, because I want to go out there when people ask me this question.
Yeah, and again, I think the most telling is that this is where the inquiries are, this is where the action is. I think that there's space around Jaxbridge Road, certainly, but given the large available sites here that are largely unencumbered, this is, this is a good spot to be in.
Because the build-in, the build-in and they will come happen there, too. And so, that's why people that come to me say, well, we did it once, and it didn't go anywhere. How will we, and I say, well, there's a lot more inquiries, and that's usually my saving grace, because I know that, so.
And I think the biggest, probably the biggest singular factor is the airport access right there, right off that highway, coupled with the fact that it is a free trade zone in that area as well.
Any other, Tom, go ahead.
So, tonight, what we're doing is simply creating the structure, first with the TIF district, and then, well, the TIF district. We're creating the TIF district if this passes, and that just creates the opportunity that provides a different funding mechanism if later on, first, the town council decides to put a bond on the warrant for March or a subsequent year, and second, the voters approve the bond. Because until the voters approve a bond, even if this passes, nothing's gonna happen.
Correct on all, correct on all those points.
Okay.
Any other further comments from the council? Town manager? Stu? Any further comments? Seeing none? Let's take it back to the council for a vote. We have before us Resolution 2013-11, which is the enabling legislation, and Kirby, we do have a typo in the, the last paragraph pursuant to New Hampshire statute.
I didn't type the resolution.
I'm not placing blame, but it needs to be fixed.
So, should I have them fix that?
Yes, please. Seems like the guilty party wants to do quick to, uh- We'll invite the guilty party to the next meeting and publicly execute that person. All right, the, so the resolution is before us. Do we have a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion before we take a vote? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Resolution passes. The next resolution before us is 2013-12, which is the adoption of the Airport Area Infrastructure District, which is, which has garnered the most discussion this evening. Is there any further discussion before we take a vote?
Yep, one more question. Oh, one question on that. So, the fourth section that says whereas, I alluded to it earlier when it talks about the plan, how, because when you do a resolution, it's kind of solid, it's, you can't change it, how flexible is that plan to be changed? It isn't, right? It has to be submitted with the resolution, verbatim, right?
This is what will pass unless you decide to change it. I think what Kevin was alluding to is, it's a lot, it's not hard to change that number, or to perhaps put in what Mr. Butler suggested, if we get requested, as long as it's before any financial commitment is made. After that, you're then playing, you're playing catch-up, so.
No, I, I-
But it would be a resolution like any other resolution, Mr. Green.
Okay, so I guess I asked the wrong question. So, the fourth section, whereas, again, states, this plan is part of that resolution.
Yes.
This plan can't be changed either, right?
Unless you change it like you would a resolution.
Unless you go through the whole thing, okay.
Yes, yes.
That's fine, okay. Thank you. I'll sit. Thank you. Okay, need a motion to accept to adopt the Resolution 2013-12?
Make a motion to accept Resolution 2013-12.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Resolution passes. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing? Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We are now out of public hearing. Okay, moving on to new business, we are introducing a new impact fee ordinance, which is 2013-06. We will introduce it tonight, we will hold a public hearing at a future council meeting, and that's when we'll take public comment. Kevin, what is the, what is the public hearing you recommend that we do the public hearing on? What's the, what's the meeting, what's the meeting date?
Let's see, we need at least 10 days' notice, so it'll either be the 4th, or it will be the, let's see.
18th is the next one.
The 18th, so it'll-
I think, you guys comfortable with the 4th?
Give us enough time yet?
Yeah. All right, so this is the, the first reading of ordinance 2013-06, which is an amendment to the zoning ordinance to replace Section 1.2 impact fees in its entirety with a revised language consistent with revisions to New Hampshire State Law 674:2- language consistent with revisions to New Hampshire State Law 674:21 and recent court orders. Whereas it was determined that zoning ordinances, Section 1.2 impact fees, require revisions to ensure its compliance with revisions to New Hampshire RSA 674:21 and recent court orders pertaining to impact fees. And whereas the town attorney was charged with amending the entire section to ensure the town's regulations are consistent with the intent and specifics of the RSA, and whereas the planning board has recommended that the council act favorably upon this request, now therefore be it ordained by the town council of the town of Londonderry that Section 2.1 of the town zoning ordinance be amended by replacing it in its entirety with revised language consistent with NHA, New Hampshire RSA 674:21 and recent court orders. And this is the first reading. We're not voting on adopting this ordinance tonight. So, I need a motion to accept the first reading and schedule a public hearing for November 4th.
Motion to accept. Second.
Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we've accepted the first reading and we, and let the public be known that we will have a public hearing on this on November 4th, 2013. Okay, next resolution on new business is 2004-11A, which is a resolution relative to the collection, distribution of rental fees for the Mayflower Grange. Let's see. Kevin, do you have anyone to present on this?
Mr. Chairman, I can tell you, is the reason for this resolution is to revise the previous resolution, to bring it more in compliance with what the funds that are collected can be used for, for the, of course, the senior centers in this particular building. And so, this is more or less just bringing the resolution up to date with how the funds can be used. And of course, the funds are collected from the rental fees.
Okay, our intention is to adopt or not adopt this resolution this evening without additional public hearings or second readings. So, do I have a volunteer to read the resolution?
Sure. Resolution 2004-11A, a resolution relative to collect and distribution of rental fees for the Mayflower Grange, first reading tonight, 10/21/13. No hearing or second reading required, and we hope to adopt on 10/21 with a positive vote. Whereas the town of Londonderry is, is the legal owner of the Mayflower Grange building located at 535 Mammoth Road in Londonderry, New Hampshire. And whereas the town senior recreation program, recreation programs are scheduled on a weekly basis at the Mayflower Grange. And whereas Londonderry Senior Citizens, Inc., is a local nonprofit organization that sponsors various senior activities and provides financial support to the town senior recreation program. And whereas Londonderry Senior Citizens, Inc., is willing to manage the public use of the Mayflower Grange by establishing and enforcing rental policies and fees that include but are not limited to exemptions of rental fees charged to Londonderry nonprofit organizations. And whereas Londonderry Senior Citizens, Inc., shall be authorized to use rental revenue to cover or contribute to the cost of janitorial services, operational supplies, repairing, upgrading, or replacing assets, preventative and/or operational maintenance, senior programs and/or activities. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Londonderry Town Council to authorize Londonderry Senior Citizens, Inc., to collect rental fees with individuals, groups, and businesses that use the Mayflower Grange for social, civic, and business functions, and allow Londonderry Senior Citizens Incorporated to use, and, use said rental fees to cover or contribute to the cost of janitorial fees, operational supplies, repairing, upgrading, or replacing assets, preventive and/or operational maintenance, senior programs and/or activities. The procedures for collecting and managing funds must be approved by the Finance and Administration Department.
This is a resolution tonight to accept, our vote will be to accept the first reading and to adopt the resolution. Do I have a motion to that effect?
You do.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the council?
I just have a question. When, when rental money comes in, is it coming to the town and then the town's cutting Londonderry Senior Citizens, Inc. a check, or are they getting the money directly?
No, the money comes to the town first. It's collected and immediately goes into our finance department.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
That's all I.
So, it's, so it's, to piggyback that comment, so it's an auditable transaction?
Absolutely, yes, yep.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution's adopted. Okay, that's the end of new business. We've already approved our minutes. Other business liaison reports, Joe.
I attended a recreation committee meeting. They talked about a couple of things. First, very interesting, they're looking to try to get everything a little bit more organized when it comes to background checks and possibly taking it upon themselves to, how is the background checks for all of the different sports across the town? So, we're, we're kind of looking into the legalese of that and, and the abilities to be able to do it. As well, trying to update all of the, the charters, make sure that everybody's holding elections, all the different organizations are, are, you know, doing the things necessary to, to move the organizations forward. And that, because we have a little bit of a different organization, Recreation Commission, than other towns do, these separate entities that have a separate organization, and so the Recreation Commission would, just wants to kind of make sure that, they're kind of taking a look to make sure it's, it's following all the regulations from Londonderry. It was a good meeting and very informative, and I think it's going in the right step to try to protect our kids.
Thanks.
The planning board, I think it was last week met, and this, there was a conceptual presentation involving a place called Restaurant Depot, which would be located in the area behind Cafe Theresa or something in that general area. The question that the proponent of the plan was bringing up is, his building is almost double the size of what the area allowed for building is there. I think it's about 55,000, his requested building. The limit there is 25,000, but the, he was suggesting that there would be a very less impact on the neighborhood due to less traffic because it's not a public, it's not a retail business, it's a wholesale business. And he's won, he got some preliminary input from the planning board, and I think he's coming back at some point, depending on what he decides to do.
I think it's still a decision-making stage on their part. I know there was articles in the paper.
Yeah.
But it's only what it says in the newspaper. Or you have to ask, it says there or. They get the details.
That was a, for those who didn't hear, that was a comment made by Art Rug, who's the chairman of our planning board.
I'm blazing.
Known troublemaker.
That's right, known troublemaker, yes. Is that it, Tom?
That's it.
No.
I, I had a meeting with the Merrimack Valley Water District Commission last week. I turned down the chairmanship, but I did accept the position as vice chairman of the district. Some good news in that we should expect a, finally, a reimbursement of much of our dues that we paid in over the past decade. I'm estimating somewhere between $30,000 and $40,000 payback to the, to the town, so that could be a windfall for, for revenues for, in the next month or so.
Okay, Kevin, town manager report?
A few items, Mr. Chair. Kind of going off the Restaurant Depot item that Counselor Frida brought up. There's, every now and then renewed interest in businesses looking to build on the 102 corridor, particularly in the POD, the Performance Overlay District. And I believe it's probably been about a decade since the town adopted that district. And I think it's probably time to have a renewed discussion and, and just a refresher on that district at the planning board level to look at whether or not that Performance Overlay District is still serving the town well, whether or not it needs to be revised or reformed in any way. And so, the, the council at some point may want to recommend that the planning board look at that district again. And I know that the staff at Town Hall and the Planning Department is also on board with taking another look at that.
You want to vote tonight on that? You want to do that by consensus or you rather take a vote? I guess the question is, do we want the planning board to, to take a look at the Performance Overlay District on, on, on 102 for any needed updates?
I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I heard. Okay, you have that consensus?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Evening, gentlemen. Art Rug, Chair of the Planning Board. I think that is a very good idea, because it has been that way for a while. And I think times do change, and I think we need to keep up with the times. And we've had some, some interest, and I think that interest we should take into account and then, and then make some modification. Actually, we have a POD also up on Route 28, and we did modify some of that in the area of Exit 5 to make it much more, it's a, it's a flexible district that's up there, too, and transit-oriented. And I think we need to take a look at the flexibility and what that affords, you know, to keep up with things. And I think we need to look at our master plan. I think that has some, you know, ideas, so, yes.
Use them, use the master plan as your guide and have at it.
Right.
Thank you. Along those same lines, Kevin, I think it'd be worthwhile to get a periodic update, not necessarily every meeting, but where the staff is moving forward with the growth management ordinance update.
Absolutely, yeah. And next, go ahead. Yeah, per previous meetings, I have begun discussions with the planning staff, because I know that's a high priority of the council, to make sure that that gets in motion before it expires.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. Next item is, just for your information, the LGC, Local Government Center, was recently reported that they've agreed to pay back its members an additional, I believe it was $33 million in total for fiscal year 2013. And so, in addition to receiving or, receiving refunds for the previous two fiscal years, 11 and 12, Londonderry will probably be receiving another payment at some point for fiscal year 13, and will plan to distribute it in the same manner that we're doing the previous refunds. And finally, there is a Veterans Breakfast that'll be taking place on November 9th. It's being hosted by the High School Pay It Forward Club. It's open to all veterans from 8:00 to 10:00, and it's at the high school cafeteria. It's free to veterans and one guest. Additional guests can give donations, and there'll be band members that'll be playing music there. There's a buffet breakfast that'll be served as well. And then I believe there's a parade that'll be taken off at 10:00.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, question for the town manager.
Go ahead.
Kevin, we want to start talking about the POD itself. We just finished the POD with Woodmont. There's been some concerns for at least the past couple of years. I know we talked about asking the planning board to take a look at it after Woodmont was accomplished. I know two years ago, we, we said that we would do that. Time to start working on that, and I know the council has aired some concerns about the process and what, and at least we have some items that we would like changed, so.
Sure.
Possibly. Not really sure how we go about doing that, but certainly mentioning it tonight in public, we should put it on the agenda and have some discussion about it.
Okay, next item is board and committee appointments and reappointments with. Please, please, please come up.
Can you tell me what date the Nevin's, which one of these four, the Nevin's?
I don't think we've selected that date yet, but.
Right. They request a continuance?
Yeah, they requested a continuance, I believe 90-day continuance.
I thought it was 60, but it might be 90.
I, yeah, I, you know what, it may have been 60. Yeah, I know with the planning board, I believe it was 120. So, they did request a continuance, though, and a, and a date. It hasn't been set. Reed, I can tell you that if it does come up on one of these dates, there'll be ample notice prior.
Reed, the, the ration, the reason for the length is because the council had some questions and needed some answers that are going to require some, some research and some data gathering. It's not, it wasn't just a decision, it was go away and bring back some data to us, and the process, what we were looking for is going to take, take some time. The, the next item is board and committee appointments and reappointments, and without, if there's no objection from the council, we'll take this all together. I'll ask Tom to, to bundle them in one motion.
Motion to accept the resignation of Robert Ramsey from the Greater Derry Cooperative Alliance for Regional Transportation, Board of Directors, term to expire on November 30th, 2013. And motion for the appointment of the following individuals, appointment of Nancy H. Michaels, candidate for the Londonderry International Exchange Committee, the appointment of Ann Champa, candidate for the Heritage Commission, and the appointment of Linda Bates, candidate for the Elder Affairs Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on any or all the candidates?
Just like to thank Mr. Ramsey for his service with the COT, Board of Directors.
Yes, please. The reason I'm resigning is because of the fact I've got some things that I have to take care of, and I don't have enough time between that and others. And now we have a, we have a full, a full membership with Nancy Michaels and Art Rug, and I didn't feel comfortable leaving until we had some people that could make it up steadily. I just wanted to recommend that you people keep, keep supporting COT, because it's doing a really good job for our handicapped and our senior citizens. And a lot of towns in the area, a couple of towns in the area proceeded to withdraw from it, and I think they're paying the price right now. So, I think it's a good thing to consider keeping this up and something that we want to make sure that keeps happening, because COT's providing a real valuable service to those two communities.
We certainly want to thank you for your dedication and service, unselfish to the community, and, and you're certainly an individual to be held up as a model of civic service.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan Bouchard, Bear Point Road, Meredith, New Hampshire, no longer Londonderry. You have an appointment here for the Elderly Affairs Committee, and I just wanted to share something with the, with the board concerning this individual. We've dealt with this individual for a long time, and, you know, she's, she's just not very friendly to other elderly people, and I'd like to share this with, with the board. She puts this on people's cars, witch parking only, all others will be towed, dragon parking only, all others will be towed. She's left nasty messages on elderly people's machines, saying that they're a mental case. And she has written over here, I cannot tolerate kids and would just as soon kill one as not. So, I just think you'd like, might want to reconsider your appointment to the Elderly Affairs Committee. And I'd just like to share this with you.
Ask, does anybody on the council familiar with this individual?
Yep, I'm the liaison. I've met her. She's contributed quite well. The chairman's recommended her. I don't know that, you know, intimately, I mean, I just, I've seen her a couple of times at the, at the Elderly Affairs Committee, but that's, that's the extent.
And you, you have a positive recommendation?
I, I can't either way, because I don't really know that well. I mean, she's, she's done well, the few times I've seen her there, she's contributed. And I know we've got, I think we have a recommendation, right, in the packet from?
Question? When you indicated that you've had dealings with her in the past, is that under the?
Law enforcement?
No. Law enforcement branch?
No.
No.
No, that was through property that I manage where she resides, where she, I've had to deal with her with other residents, elderly people as well. So, they brought it up to my attention today, so I decided to come here today. I thought, you know, if I'd known beforehand, I would have given it to town manager and forwarded to you guys, but I just thought you might want to be aware of it.
Well, it's the council's pleasure. What we can do is we can move forward with the, with the motion, or we can amend the motion to take this individual out and request that she come for an interview, and if you want.
Mend the motion to pull her out and request her to come for an interview.
Okay, who, who made the original motion?
I did.
I did.
Would you, would you want to do that?
Sure. I move to amend the motion to remove the recommendation for the appointment of Linda Bates, candidate for the Elder Affairs Committee at this time, and ask that she be scheduled for an interview. And I also say, Mr. Bouchard, you know, I guess, I'd just like to hear from her, what her version is, especially since, to me, these, these two things look like jokes. Witch parking only, all others to be towed, T-O-A-D.
Wasn't a joke for the resident that lived there. It was quite a harassment and bullying, so that's why.
But, but it would be nice to hear from the person who's claiming it's harassment, you know, or give her an opportunity to make her allegations in front of the other person.
Make the second motion.
We've dealt with it.
In front of Ms. Bates. Actually, want to amend your second as well?
Yes.
Okay, so the, so the motion has been remade and seconded to accept the first three individuals, the resignation and the two appointments, and that the motion also includes requesting that Ms. Bates be invited for, for an interview. And let's, please let's make sure that this is not a thought of as a contentious interview, we're just, some things have been said without the benefit of her ability to rebut that. We'd just like to hear her, see what she has to say.
Well, the other, the other part of that, Mr. Chairman, if I could, is that, and I respect that you brought this here, but really, it would be encouraged at least to have the particular person, which I won't name here, contact the town manager and give some more, I guess, history, because it sounds like there's some history. We're looking at a couple pieces of paper, a long nasty note, but I think it'd be better if we have, kind of have a feeling of what we're getting ourselves into.
We want to be fair about it.
Yeah, exactly, we want to see both sides.
Okay, so the motion, the new motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Okay, as a point of information, we're about to enter our budget season, and we have a, our next meeting is November 4th, which will include the, the public hearing on impact fees, but also be our first presentation of the budget from the town manager to the council. We then meet on Saturday, the 16th, for a budget workshop. We meet again on Monday, the 18th, for our regular meeting. And then we also have, as part of that meeting, we have a budget discussion on the 18th. And then we meet again on November 25th, right around Turkey Day, and then we, we continue to meet in December on the 2nd and the 16th.
Will turkey be served on 11/25?
It might be.
Okay.
So, and that, those dates are all in our, our agenda, so.
Kirby, write that down.
You don't have to take notes. Any other discussion or issues before we close the meeting? Seeing none, accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved, chairman?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.